Well, because I would be running it. So I'm glad they've asked me some things ahead of time. That doesn't always happen. But I don't know what's going to happen. It needs to be proposed as legislation. So kind of far off, but it is a, since it is a top priority of the governor, then it's got a better shot than other things. And that would be funding for infrastructure.
One of the things that, as you know, our county is fairly small. It's sparse population, very large by landmass, 1,860 square miles. But as we are looking at this, the bug needs to be put in the ears. I mean, you know, we've just gone through that recession 10 years ago. We're just now getting up to speed and getting things going. The planning commission is fairly newish. That's why you're here tonight. I've been around for several years.
Hey, Dan. Let's make sure we don't talk about anything interesting for everybody else. So let's not get too far ahead of ourselves.
I'm sorry. This is not a private channel.
No, I know. And everybody else is not quite ready to pay attention yet, is all. So...
Oh, no. This is for later. I was just making comments because the email she sent out is of good importance and of value to the county. And she'll talk about it because she knows more about than I do. I just read her email. That's all I did.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure none of us missed anything.
No, no, you're not going to miss because there's grant money available. Free money if you work for it a little bit.
Yeah, I'll put a little prompt in one of my slides to have me to talk about that. Maybe just the beginning before we really start.
Well, there's going to be a discussion period, and it might be good during the discussion period. I mean, we are going to talk, aren't we? I mean, not just continuous slides.
Oh, I'll tell you what. There are a surprising number of slides. But some of that is because there's a lot of scenario questions throughout. So there is also a lot of talking.
Recording in progress.
There it goes. See? We're started recording. Got it.
It's nice to have that. Hey, Jen.
Yes, ma'am.
Could I share my screen just to test and make sure everything's working?
Yep, absolutely.
Cool. Thank you. That's not what I want.
Peter? Can you just make sure you keep your computer on mute throughout? And if you need to speak, use one of the stand mics? Thank you, sir. Good, Danny. How are you?
Good.
Nope, looks good. We're resorting to bulls.
Okay, try that now.
I'm very well. How are you?
Good.
There we go.
You can have one of these, Peter. I think that's what we're down to. Danny, we are just waiting for Jason, who's supposed to join us via Zoom. Yep, other than that, we are present and accounted for. Of course. Yeah, I used more than my fair share because my soda exploded.
Years ago.
Thank you.
That was cool that you came on, got him on board pretty quick.
Yeah, one of the things that he needs to drag a little bit more. He's got 24 or 25 years' work experience. He's got two degrees. He's got all the certifications. And he's not got a job for more than one. So one of the things that has come to commissioners and the staff department we're pleased that we've got somebody with his organizational skills here. I think you're going to see a little bit difference in the future presentations for planning of void county commissioners. I'm going to kind of use the words a more professional, direct quote. But I know that Commissioner O'Leary is here and three others that like that high organizational skill.
Welcome aboard.
Yeah.
Do you want to go ahead and get started? See if Jason shows up along the lines?
Are there any handouts or anything?
Danny, do you want to make any sort of introduction? Or we just hand it immediately off to Casey? Take role?
You know, I just go around and introduce people so we know who Casey is.
Sure. If everybody wants to take the mute off their mics, we're going to see how it plays out. If we start getting a lot of background noise, we'll go ahead and mute everybody again. So we'll start with, well, myself. I'm Jen Click. I'm a land use planner here at Albert and have worked with Danny and Casey to get this organized with DOLA. So Casey, you want to introduce yourself?
Yes, thanks. Hi, I'm Casey McPherson. I'm the senior planner in the community development office at DOLA and been with DOLA for about seven years. And I know that this is not called for at this point. I'm just saying hello. But these are my favorite things to do in my job. So I'm really excited to be here with you tonight. Thanks.
Dan, you want to identify yourself?
Yes, Dan Mahalik. I'm Planning Commissioner, District One. And I'm joining via Zoom.
Okay. Casey, thank you for joining us and setting this up, helping. So my name's Danny. I'm a member of the planning commission. We'll go around the table and kind of introduce all of us. Oops.
To the best of our ability.
Okay.
There we go.
Yes, Van Sands. I'm now, I guess, a planning commissioner for District Three. So I live over in Elizabeth.
John Surbeck, District Two now.
I'm Greg Thompson. I'm the new planning manager. Just to let you know, did invite some other towns, Simla and Elizabeth and Kiowa. And I don't think any of them were able to come, although we'll certainly forward along the recording so they have access to this information as well.
I'm Dwayne Owens, and I'm out in Kiowa, District Two now, I think. So I'm grateful, Casey, that you would put this on. Thank you for your time, and I'm looking forward to learning a lot in a short period of time.
Yeah, Michael Buck, District One, I think is now currently District Two. And glad to be here and thanks for joining us.
Peter Hogan-Dyke. I've been on planning commission for, what, about four years or something like that? But I'll be darned if I know what district I'm in. One? Oh, great.
Roger Burton, also District One. I've been on the commission for a year here, and I've been on several other commissions and boards in other communities.
Greg, please.
Yeah, I'm Greg. They're county commissioner for District Three. The three of us commissioners asked me to be the Board of County Commissioners representative tonight. One of the things we want to do is very strongly say thank you for your contributions to reviewing the different applications. That information is very valuable to us as county commissioners when the applications finally come to us. Thank you.
So just to check in, Casey, were you able to hear pretty much everybody?
Mostly yes. I'm thinking there might be a few times when I may need a question repeated, but mostly.
So real quick, gentlemen, as you speak, just pull a microphone a little closer to you and use your outside voice. And with that, we'll go ahead and hand it over to Casey.
Awesome. Okay, I tested this just a moment ago. Keep your fingers crossed for me. Okay, you should be seeing the intro slide, yes? Some confirmation?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thanks. Okay, wonderful. Well, thanks all for being here. And as I mentioned before, these Planning Our Fresh Air workshops really are one of my favorite things that I get to do. I think that I do learn something from every community that I get to talk to, and I get to incorporate it back into the slides and spread it around. So I'm looking forward to hearing more from you tonight and talking through some of which you're working on. So just to start it out here, some logistics and disclaimers. The workshop runs about two hours. It depends on how quickly I talk, which I will try not to be too quick. But mostly it depends on the conversation that we're going to have. This is adapted for some heavy Zoom participation. So it says, "Please join in by chatting or unmuting." You'll have a little more easy access to throw in your comments. But I would say it's much more fun when you ask questions along the way, offer up your own stories and examples. It sounds like there's a good spread of experience in the room. So hearing from you is always, makes it a lot richer. And then respond to the scenario questions, which we'll have throughout and are quite a lot of fun. And here it says, "Topics are anticipated to be 90% applicable." What I mean by that is what we'll talk about tonight is what's true most of the time. But every locality has some of their own twists and turns. And so what I like to say is, you've got your experts checking with your staff, sometimes checking with your attorney. That can become necessary. But there are some local nuances. But what we'll go over is going to be, by and large, very true. And then, of course, a little legal disclaimer. We'll get into, I mean, you know, you know your work. It's very legally informed, I'll call it. But this tonight is not intended to be legal advice. So saying that at the outset here, we'll talk about some very legal stuff. Brief agenda. This should look familiar to you from what was sent out. So we've already covered welcome and introductions. Thanks for that. What we'll do tonight is go through these main headings. Why plan? Planning authority. Roles and responsibilities of all the players in the game. Long-range planning and implementation. We'll talk about tools and how they work, tips and tricks kind of stuff. The effective meetings and decision-making portion is probably the lengthiest and certainly has the most hypothetical scenario questions for us to talk about. But lots of tips in that one. Legal and ethical issues at the end. We'll have scenario questions throughout. And then I put, so, you know, when COVID was really starting, I had a planning during a pandemic section. And I've been toying with taking that out, but from some feedback, I've kept it in, sort of, and it's turned into planning during disruptions. So still working on that piece. I continue to test it on groups. So if you have thoughts, it's very brief. But if you have thoughts on what would be helpful as far as tools and resources for whatever disruptions that can come up in our work, then I'd certainly be all ears. So those are the main things that we'll cover. And before we dive into the substance, I'll say two things. First, the first bit, I do talk at you quite a bit. So I apologize in advance for that, but I promise it will end, and your input will become very important. So I'll talk at you for a little while. And then the second thing is, we're going to start off with what I sort of lovingly call the DOLA commercial. And really what this is, is a reminder on some of the tools that exist at the state level and based on what kind of questions you have locally, other resources that might be helpful to you. So this first one is just a reminder that at DOLA, we have my division, the Division of Local Government, with our field team, our regional managers. And I believe Clay Brown is going to be visiting your area tomorrow, question mark. So we've got that team. And then the Division of Housing also has their regional development specialists. So we kind of chunk things out and try and spread out and make sure that we're available to all corners of the state. I'm trying to think. You know what? I might just pause here and mention, we were talking just before we started about an upcoming grant opportunity. So I think I'll pause here because seeing this DOH map reminds me, we've been working very closely with the Division of Housing for some funds that are out right now. And those are called 1271 funds, just because of the bill that created them. And we're actually going to be having a webinar tomorrow if you want to learn more about the programs. And the two things that I'll tell you about them right now is that they're focused on affordable housing. The planning grant program provides planning funds to do some of those sort of legislative activities that you're familiar with to incentivize affordable housing. And then the incentives program is some of that gap funding. Actually, it's really flexible. It's a lot more than gap funding. But gap funding and other things for communities who have gotten some of their planning ducks in a row. So with that, I'll put in the chat a link to register for that. And Jen, maybe you want to share that out? Let me know how you'd like me to share that if there's another better way.
Sure. I think what we'll do is exchange a couple of things via email after the fact that might be useful. And if we could take a second real quick, is there any way you can blow up your screen at all?
Oh, okay. Did that make it better?
It's not that, you guys. It's an aspect ratio thing that I think right now is limited by our projector. And that's not something I know how to adjust.
Okay, let me think about that. Oh, so there's nothing I could do on my end?
Not as I understand it. As long as you've expanded each page to its maximum, then I think we're stuck.
Okay, how hard is it to see? Pretty hard?
You can't see the details.
It depends on what, yeah, what details we're attempting to see. If we need to read the list of regional managers, then we can't see it. But that is totally legible.
This one? Okay. Most of my slides are more like this. If this is a view that works.
I think you'll be good.
Okay. I will, well, you'll certainly have access to a copy of these, but they're very important for tonight. So I think mostly it should work, but let's test it out a little and maybe stop me again, and let's reassess if it becomes a problem.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Okay, great. Yeah, these ones about the maps, I'll go back just for a second, is really just to give you a visual. So cross my fingers. Okay, a couple other comments about planning resources. DOLA basically provides technical and financial assistance, so not a regulatory agency. And in my office, the community development office, we do land use and planning assistance, integrated land use. So some communities are trying to integrate water and land use or housing or hazards and land use. And then also downtown revitalization assistance through our Main Street program. If you're interested in more info on that, let me know, and I can put you in touch with the right people. And then a little reminder on our website with the address. Honestly, just Googling "DOLA" and "CDO" for community development office is the best way to get there. Talk to Jen, get in touch with me. This, not necessary to read it, just a visual aid screenshot of a webpage that I have, which is Planning Commissioner Resources. And this is a place, if you're more of a reading type learner, we've got some good information on here about some of the stuff we'll cover tonight. You know, master plan primer, three-mile plans, land use authority, those kinds of things. So if you like written references, then this is a good webpage to check out. Lots of info on there. We also have, again, not another one that you don't necessarily need to... This one is to let you know that we concluded the 2020 land use survey that we do every five years to get a sense of what's happening across the state. What are the trends? What are the gaps? And we've got the 2015 results, online, of course. But the 2020 results were so close to finalizing the report. So please keep an eye out. We'll have that distributed on our listserv as soon as it's finalized. It's getting close. Very excited. So there'll be some good data in there. The only other thing I want to mention about that is the data can be a little high level. So the other thing we're going to be doing is digging in with communities who responded that they're working on certain topics and diving more into case studies so that we can develop a few best practice reports over the next, honestly, several years. I view it as an ongoing kind of project so that we can adapt our resources to what we hear from you about examples that you need, that kind of thing. This is a screenshot of our Main Street program webpage. So again, if you're interested in learning more about Main Street and some of the resources that they have available, let me know, and I'll put you in touch with that team. Downtown revitalization. We also have a guidebook that lives online, and it's called Planning for Hazards. You can go to planningforhazards.com. And so if you're looking for how to integrate hazards into your planning documents, it's fabulous. I mean, you can search by hazard. You can look at community examples. You can even look at sample code language. Just a lot of information on there to think through how to approach hazards in your planning life. This one, maybe less applicable for you all. In fact, I presented it to Delta, so I just left their screenshot on here. Because it's about wildfire, which I'm sure is sort of on your mind, but maybe less so than other areas. But I left it in here as a prompt to remind me to say that there are also some good, there's some good information through extension and through some other state agencies. So depending on what kind of information you're interested in, I can also hook you into other resources, non-DOLA resources, depending on what you want to talk about. However, a huge resource, and maybe my favorite one, is the State Demography Office. So, you know, our work starts with demographic information and data. And the State Demography Office is just a treasure trove. So here I pulled some of the county's information just to show basic growth. So here we've got since from 2000 to 2019, looking at actually quite a bit of growth. Oh, my goodness, it's about 25% or so. Where's that coming from? You know, you can really dig into the demographic or community profiles and answer some questions like that. Where is it coming from? Well, it looks like births and deaths are kind of the same. So it's really coming from in-migration. It's probably not news to you. It probably makes a lot of intuitive sense. And then you can dig in on things like housing units. And there's a whole bunch on employment and that kind of stuff. But, you know, here you can start thinking about, all right, we have in-migration. What's the data on who that might be? How does that jive with our housing needs? You know, maybe that's on your mind. So some things here is that the vast majority of housing in the county is single unit and ownership. So is that working for the people who are there? Is that working for who's projected to be there? I don't know. But SDO sure has a State Demography Office. It's a bunch of information that you can sort of check against, which you already must know quite a lot about just from your day to day. And then finally here, I want to mention a little bit on the census, which is, if I'm honest, a bit of a bummer conversation because we got the first data in April, very limited. It was kind of limited to information that would help with redistricting. But we learned some stuff. Colorado population as of April of last year at over 5 million, almost 6 million. So it's almost 15% increase since 2010 statewide. We have, that makes us the sixth sort of highest among US states for growth and gets us an additional seat for representation. So I said it's a little sad because we were supposed to get more information last month. And it's now December, and I'm still waiting on it. So hopefully that will happen soon. I know that our demographers are just chomping at the bit for it so that they can update the community profiles and get more good information into your hands and others. So with that, end of commercial. Now, oh, sorry, one more thing. You can also join the State Demography Office's newsletter if you like sort of a monthly update. There's a good one. I would recommend it. Okay. Now we'll go into the main event tonight and start with why plan and planning authority. Again, as I mentioned, still quite a bit of talking from me, but then we'll shift gears in just a little bit. So some basics, but this is where I like to start. Why plan? Pretty obvious, but helps government to be more efficient and effective. So for example, defined processes and development code ensures fair treatment. Be very helpful for development. Helps communities seize opportunities. You know, there are some, for example, that have said, you know, we create a clear vision for open space, documented it in all of our planning tools. And so when a parcel became available in a prime spot, already had the community support and was able to get it done sort of months sooner than it would have otherwise taken. And then to the point of this picture, prevents undesirable development, which can happen anywhere and probably does. And you're probably thinking of an example on, I don't know, your commute that you could relate to. So haphazard development creates ISOs, problems, development patterns that are tough to... So haphazard development creates ISOs, problems, development patterns that are tough to maintain financially, all kinds of things. This is a quote that I like to keep in my, just kind of back pocket, thinking about sort of bopping around town and the questions that you can hear about why, why, Y Plan. Here it says, who would invest in a corporation that didn't have a business plan? Well, the same is true for a community that doesn't have a plan. Every successful institution, whether it's a corporation or a community, needs a plan. I like how that's put. Now moving more into some, I'll call it light legal, we've got our grounding authority. So the grounding authority for planning is the rights of government to establish laws and ordinances to preserve public order, tranquility, and promote health, safety, and welfare. Basically, it's called the police power. It's reserved to the states from the Constitution and then granted to local governments through statutes. And I'm sure, as you know, Colorado has done that quite liberally. We're a state of local control. So lots of authority granted through our statutes. We have very few statutory planning requirements, but I will get into them. And so communities will either be, have the statutory authority or be home rule and then would want to consult the charter as well. So for statutory authority, the key here to remember about, you know, what's authorized and some of the regulations that you consider is that regulations must be tied to a valid public purpose. That's that substantive due process that is guaranteed citizens. And be enacted and implemented so that directly affected, so that those who are directly affected have the meaningful opportunity to participate. That's that procedural due process and probably the bulk of, of day to day. And we'll talk a lot more about that later on. Guaranteeing that, et cetera, pitfalls and tips. But first to stay with authority for a little bit. Here's what we do have as far as statutory required planning in Colorado. So we've got the master plan requirement for, for communities who hit those thresholds in statute. And I will say that that statute does contain a lot of words like duty and shalls. But of course, because we're Colorado, it also has a lot of may and clued and a whole laundry list of things for master plans. And I'll get more into those pieces when we get to the comprehensive plan tool in, in a little bit, a few minutes. We do have some requirements for subdivision regulations, sort of the form that those take, three mile plans for municipalities. And then I want to flag that we also have now a new requirement for comprehensive plans related to water. It's a, I'll, I have more information on that in a little bit, but just to take the heat out of it, it's a bit of an if then. So it's not necessarily required to be in comprehensive plans now. But as of last year, if it is included, then there are some specific things that have to happen following that. So more to come if you can hold your, hold your curiosity. Now a few minutes on roles and responsibilities. This can come up, you know, I hear a lot of questions from communities about, you know, appropriate roles and how we interact. Sometimes when it goes well, sometimes when it goes poorly, and often a bit of a changing scene all the time. So what I'm going to cover are roles and responsibilities of elected officials, planning commission, staff, citizens, and applicants. First off with the elected officials, this is the body that provides direction, communication, so making policy and legislating, using the enabling authority and charter if applicable to protect public interest, hiring staff, appointing boards, and providing ongoing direction and two-way communication. Planning commission, a little different, appointed, not elected, and advisory to the elected board. So main roles are preparing that master or comp plan, applying the policy and regulations, providing expertise, reviewing applications, adopting and using bylaws. I would add updating bylaws too. Regularly assessing planning policies, regulations, and doing visioning, you know, sort of returning and doing that iterative process. Basically the voice of the community on land use. Big role. Now we'll turn to staff, another big role. I think all these are big roles, if I'm honest, but. Staff and consultants provide technical expertise and guidance, training, information, assisting with research, writing the staff review or report, noticing meetings and communicating with applicants. That'll come up more later when we talk about ex parte. Ensuring good communication and offering professional opinion. So these staffers, you know, clerk, planner, administrator, attorney, et cetera. Very, very important role there. And I would pause on this and say, one helpful thing that especially a planning commission can do as that sort of voice of the community and connection point is to wherever possible, educate the public on the role of various staffers. That can be helpful. I hear countless stories about confusion, confusion about basic roles, you know, even in public meetings. So that's one thing that can be helpful to do. Citizens, their role, participate fully, advise the appointed and elected officials, ask questions, offer input and solutions. And finally applicants. The role of the applicant is to learn and respect adopted rules and processes. Expect fair and predictable process, do not work the system. Communicate issues and concerns, that helps us revise things sometimes if we need to. And then have realistic expectations and an understanding of the role of government. So that's things like, you know, no late materials or last minute changes to an application, no ex parte communications. And when it comes down to it, I would say basically understanding that following the adopted process and complying with policies and regs means the project will likely have more community support. That's when all things go well. Things don't always go well. So it's good to sort of slow down and reflect together when things don't go well. Is there an issue that keeps coming up? Do you find yourself regularly wanting to attach certain conditions to things? You know, what are the issues and trends? Those are the kinds of questions that can point you towards needing to suggest revisions to things. So it can be helpful, we like to recommend, you know, annual meetings with the elected board. And, and there, or maybe through other means, it depends, you know, locally what your setup is. But making recommendations to your elected board for changes to those policies, regs, and standards, especially based on how you might answer questions about what are your trends? What are those issues that keep coming up, those kinds of things? Okay. As promised, I'm going to warm you up with one scenario question. And recognizing it may be small for you, I'll, I'll read you through it. And I have, you know, you'll see that there, there'll be multiple choice, but if you have other thoughts, as many communities do, then, you know, this is sort of a free for all of sharing your experience, meant to just provoke conversation. So we'll just have one in this section and then we'll have a few in the next and then many more later. So to start you off, this first scenario question says, the planning commission makes a unanimous decision, but the town board overturns it, which in fact does happen often. What actions could the commission take to address their concern about being overturned? So some ideas, talk with staff for feedback, ask for regular check-ins with the board for two-way communication. B says, call the mayor to find out more details. C is attend the town board's next public meeting and raise the issue for discussion. D is post a letter on social media to make the commission's point of view known and understood. You can just call out which, what, which one might you pick?
A.
There it is. It's just the warm-up. I'm going to get you a toastie so you have more to throw in later. A is right. So this one is, a couple thoughts that I would add here would be, this is also getting at the importance of making decisions based on local requirements. And we'll get into that and findings of fact later, avoiding opinion. And I think that it will also get into a little bit of social media later. I think D is pretty obviously a horrible answer, but good job. Okay, let's move on. Now I'll talk a little bit about planning tools. And again, 90% applicable, right? So everyone does things a little bit differently, but big picture, basic planning tools are here. So your comp plan is the, you know, the vision, the guide to the future, but you implement that vision by adopting regulations and other means. So here are some ideas of other, other pieces that you might have in place. Three mile plans, annexation policies, IGAs, PUDs, maybe use 1041 powers, subdivision regs, zoning, building codes, and incentives and programs. And one thing I would say about all of these tools is to consider both intended and unintended consequences of incentives. You know, so if you've got like tap fees or review fees, that kind of stuff, process differences. It's always a good idea to take a fresh look at those and see how are they going? What are they incentivizing? And is that what we really want to see or did we kind of miss something? Is there a loophole we need to close? That's been coming up a lot, especially with tap fees lately. Surprise, surprise, right? Okay, so now a little bit on some of these tools. First off, the comp plan. So this, as I mentioned, community's vision and roadmap. Most master plans are advisory in Colorado, unlike other, other states. But they can be mandatory if adopted with sufficient detail as, as a regulation. So I would say that one piece about the comp plan and having regular updates is that it's really important to go through the process as a community before getting to the implementation tools. You know, if the plan was regulatory, it might be more difficult or sort of less effective as a planning tool because you may limit your vision based on what you think about the regs that you have, so essentially skipping a step. Good place to start with this foundation. Some communities don't, don't want to or cannot update every five to 10 years. I think planning professionals would tell you five to seven years. And that's just not feasible for a lot of places, just based on the price or other reasons. Some communities then choose to update sort of piece by piece. But I would say if a plan's older than 10 years, yeah, it's pretty important to get that updated. Okay, a couple comments on standard plan elements. So as I mentioned, the statute on Colorado plans has a whole bunch of mayes when it comes to this piece of what should be included. These are basic elements, transportation, housing, you know, energy, pretty straightforward. Although, and we do require recreation and tourism as an element, and then water. As promised, we have some new info on water. So what's all on this slide is basically a lot of text to say that if, if a community decides to include water in a comprehensive plan, as of last year, you don't have to do that. But if you do, then there are a couple of actions that must follow, which are consulting with the entities that supply water in the area, identifying facilities and make sure, making sure that they are sufficient for the projected population, and including water conservation policies. So if this is something that comes up for you, I want to note that we do have a water and land use planner on staff. And part of her job description is providing technical assistance to communities who are working on this. So she has created this, just a visual aid, this sub-page on water and land use integration. You can start there if you like, or you can give her a call and see where she would have you, have you start based on wherever you're at in considering water to the extent that you are. So FYI about that resource and as well as that requirement if you do work water into your plan. Okay. Functionally, the comp plan provides guidance. I like to think of it as a foundation, right? So if there's cracks in it, there can be a lot of other issues. So it's good to have a good one, get it right, because it provides guidance for rezoning requests, the land use code incentives, annexation requests, decision about infrastructure, location of new infrastructure, and basically vision for growth and development. And I suppose if decisions are challenged, sometimes it can come up in court cases. Less fun, but that can happen. Other long-range plans, here's just a little sampling. Some, you know, some will have sub-area master plans, capital improvement plans, a little more standard, open space and trails, parks and rags, stormwater. The main question, no matter which long-range plan that we're talking about, is to what extent do they support or conflict with each other? You know, it can happen. When things get updated and certainly not all at once, conflicts can arise. So that's a good thing to take a look at and try and identify if there are any, any things that need to be updated so that they're not conflicting.
Just real quick on that slide, to add a little bit more info on that. The sub-area master plan is something that we've kind of talked about doing in some of the small former towns. Matheson, Albert, unincorporated towns, thank you. And that's something that we'll likely be contracting with a consultant for work to be done this next year. So something we might be looking at.
Okay, work on the horizon. Great. So that's good to know. And, you know, this is about as far as we go on this, in this presentation. But if you want to connect more on that, certainly happy to. Okay. Anything else there or ready for the next?
You can go ahead.
I'll take that, okay, thanks. Okay. Now a few comments on three mile plans. So these are those plans that have to be in place prior to any annexation that sort of identify what's to happen in the three miles outside of city limits. There's a whole bunch of information in that statute. But what I want to say here is that in Colorado, they tend to vary in specificity. I mean, the statutory language is that the plan has to generally describe proposed location, character, and extent of a whole bunch of things. Streets, subways, or in there, bridges, waterways, et cetera. And I think that communities have, have different definitions of what generally describing that means. So there can be a wide variety in what these look like. But my top tip about them would be to engage in extensive community outreach prior to updating in advance of an annexation. In fact, you'll, you all will have to correct me. I think it was Elizabeth that created a handout, and I hope I'm not raising any old trauma. I think Elizabeth created a handout on this about what a three mile plan is and isn't for some, like a public facing document. I'm pretty sure it was, but I really liked, I really liked the sheet that I saw on that. But we hear about that sort of more and more. The need for some public education about what, what is a three mile plan and what it means and what it doesn't mean for property owners. So I've really heard about that from honestly every corner of the state. Okay, a little bit about cooperative planning. So this is getting at that planning issues are complex, they're interrelated, growth impacts, don't care about political boundaries. Applicants will shop for the best deal. Incomplete or incompatible standards make for rough transitions, and it's a way to use tax dollars more efficiently. I put a Colorado revised statute citation in there because that is the sort of authority and encouragement for local governments to cooperate or contract with other units of government for planning purposes and regulating development of land. So very encouraged. And I would say from my perspective, there's a lot more interest in cooperative and regional planning. Although I don't know that it's necessarily panned out quite as much as the interest level. So maybe in a few years we'll see more of it. Time will tell. Okay, a couple comments on where this pops up. So for long-range planning, cooperative planning shows up in IGAs, in engaging in comp plan updates of, of, sort of adjacent jurisdictions. Sometimes there's revenue sharing, sometimes there's even a shared vision developed for certain areas or issues. for certain areas or issues. And then in development review in particular, some communities refer applications and consider comments. And some of them refer them within a specific area only or certain sort of interest only. Here, I tend to see that's where, you know, a county and municipality are trying to decide to whose standards are we going to develop at the edge of the community so that we can try and, I don't know, realize some future cost savings, make sure transitions are going okay, that kind of thing. So the key here is, I put in, Monopoly is actually my least favorite game, but be that as it may, I thought of it. Because the idea of this slide is to help to address unintentional subsidies. That's something we can do as we're planning for any development. Okay, a couple comments here at the end of this section. I want to touch on trends and key issues. And this is coming from what we hear across the state. So some of it may resonate, some of it may not. What I tend to see are planning for an aging demographic considering public health and livability. That seems to be pretty global. Integrating hazards into the development decision-making policies, thinking about mitigation. That also seems to be pretty global, but the hazard that communities care about changes quite a bit. Plan for protecting and ensuring sufficient water supply and quality. Creating opportunities for affordable housing. And then, note, remember, we talked about funding opportunities. Let's talk more if you'd like. Strategize towards economic diversification and consider social equity. So, a couple comments on this one. I want to skip to, yeah, I want to skip that one. So, basically, the idea here is, especially with some of the things that happened with COVID and teleworking and things like that have thrown processes into new places. Learned a lot of different approaches and technology and that kind of stuff. So, the idea here is thinking about residents as different needs and abilities to engage in the planning process. So asking questions like, can a single parent with young kids attend an evening public hearing? What about people with evening jobs? What about digital engagement? That's great, but how's broadband? And then, making sure, to the greatest extent possible, to have a multi-pronged approach with public engagement. I also was recently reading something on the American Planning Association website. They had a post about inclusivity for persons with dementia and how to create public, I guess, public meetings. But yeah, really sort of any kind of public outreach spaces that are more friendly and able to get participation. So, that can be, if you're interested, that can be a follow-up link that I can share with Jen. Interesting stuff. So the graphic, which I did not explain, is, maybe you're familiar with it. I like this one because I like bicycles. The idea that equality means providing the same thing to everybody, which is a good thing to do. Equity means thinking about how they can access. So, just like we were talking about, can someone with an evening job join? No, let's give them a Zoom option, done. That kind of stuff. Okay, now we're going to move into meetings and decision-making. And prepare yourselves, get your voices ready because there are quite a few scenario questions coming your way. But we're going to kick it off with just some reflective questions. Think about how your meetings tend to go. So picture that in your mind's eye. And I'm curious, if your meetings look like this? Some meetings are a little formal, intimidating. Other meetings are a little informal, which can come with its own sort of unexpected pressures and issues. Other meetings are just straight hostile. So, I'll say, I'm positive you've run into. I don't know, and I haven't heard, but who hasn't? So what we'll talk about in this segment is really focusing in on thinking about which hat you're wearing in terms of legislative actions versus quasi-judicial actions. So legislative would be those ones that are reflecting public policy relating to matters of a general character. And quasi-judicial is where you're feeling like a judge. It's, this is what the rules are. Here, we're applying it to the specific case. There are also administrative actions, but there's not as much to say there. So we'll focus in on legislative and quasi-judicial. To kick it off with your legislative hat, this would be like the public meeting. So this is where you're creating public policy that will have a permanent or general character, widely applicable. Got a little citation to some Colorado law about that. Seek input and champion broad, inclusive public participation. That's critical for those to go well. Also, explain the context, the big picture and process and timeline. Demonstrate active listening. Limit jargon and acronyms. That's really important to accessibility. So, providing that due process right that we're protecting for citizens. It must be accessible so they have a meaningful opportunity to participate. Help make it relevant. Act as community ambassadors and remain courteous no matter what. So here in red, it says "making law", because that's really what's going on here. So this is some weighty work.
An example, real quick, if I could jump in? An example of that would be a change. We need to change our sign code. We're going to make them taller. We're going to allow more of them, whatever it might be. That would apply to all businesses in the county. That would be the legislative. Update to the code, a comprehensive plan would also be a legislative process.
Yeah, definitely. And I have a chart, ugh, it's quite a while down. But yes, that is right. And we'll be backed up by a slide you'll see later tonight.
Thanks.
Okay, different from public hearings. So this is the quasi-judicial hat. And this is protecting the procedural due process. So basically, that comes down to providing notice and providing an opportunity to be heard. And one practice pointer, some communities choose to explicitly include the types of quasi-judicial decisions that are made in code. So if that's desired, that is something that happens sometimes. And so here are a few tips to make sure it goes well and to protect the due process right. Announcing the rules in advance and enforcing them consistently. So all of these are sort of little loops in thread that can be pulled and can turn into challenges to the process. Remain unbiased while hearing evidence show that you're listening. You know, various ways to do that. The importance of a strong chair is really critical. And we'll talk specifically about the chair shortly. But really, a strong chair and a supportive board that are staying on task, avoiding tangents. Receiving input only during noticed public hearings. We'll talk about ex parte a little bit later. Ask questions and make sure that they're focused on, does the application meet our standards? So really getting that evidence, generating that strong record of decision, and making careful motions. Okay. Now, a whole bunch of tips for you. What makes a meeting effective? So basically, you know, some of the simplicity here is beautiful. Everyone had a meaningful opportunity to participate. People felt they were heard, which can be accomplished in many ways. That relevant issues related to the standards were addressed. There are no long tangents or discussions about issues the code or plan don't address. As a tip, I have here, start with the staff report. It's a great way to lay that foundation. An effective meeting is when the commission's decision was clear, what and why, and that it's reasonably defensible. I would say, I don't know if this comes up later, but one tip I like to give is, it's a good approach to not only start with a staff report, but you can move to approve something for the reasons listed in the staff report. Oh, I like that. Effectively includes the report in the records. Very nice move. Okay, a few slides on the chair. Very important role. A strong chair helps make a meeting effective. So, a strong chair is going to be a great communicator and will set the tone. What's the right tone? You know, civil, professional, sort of, none of those pictures we saw at the beginning of this section. Ensuring civility, really demonstrating strong listening and being a timekeeper and enforcer. The key here is to not hand over control of the meeting. This is something that I really love. So Jerry Dahl likes to compare the role of the chair as an air traffic controller. So focusing on that next plane that's coming, not on each moment, sort of getting lost in it. So, being in that hot seat of recognizing what we're discussing now and are we doing a good job of it? But also, what's coming next? Are we on time, that kind of thing? Because being that timekeeper is critical, and the enforcer of that. Making sure that there's no dead air. That's when, you know, if there's sort of a party crasher that wants to come disrupt things, that's where they're going to sort of creep into the conversation. So keeping rid of that dead air and using cues. Hey, we're on item two of six and it's 9:00 PM. Don't have a chew, I'd like to go home at some point. Those kinds of things. And then other planning commissioners back up the chair to make sure that enforcing other rules is consistent. Okay, a few more tips. Setting the right tone, as I mentioned, civil and professional is generally recommended. There's some communities say, hey, you know, we like to make sure that we're approachable. So we are a little bit more casual. That can work, you know, it really depends locally. On the other hand, I've also heard of some stories where that has led to little problems that you might not expect. Like even sort of sitting next to each other at the same table and then recognizing that there's some sort of more confidential information. Or maybe there's pressure because that applicant is right next to you to be more positive. There's little things can come up. But again, I would say it depends on your local context. Okay, evaluate your equipment. One thing that's been coming up lately with all this testing of different ways of doing things has been, not necessarily faulty equipment, but just maybe making sure it's all running smoothly. There was one community who told me, yeah, we got these new microphones, they're great, except all of a sudden our recordings are full of the noise of paper shuffling. So making sure you're doing some quality control on that. That also protects people's access to their records, which again, is important for due process. Provide information on procedures ahead of time. Repeat it if you need to throughout the meeting. Sounds simple, but thank people for their testimony. Goes back to the point of people feeling heard. Watch for non-verbal cues. Acknowledge that planning decisions are political and personal. That works in some communities, others said no. But some have said, yeah, just being kind of straight-shooting about that has been helpful. And then showing extraordinary patience. Can be tough. Okay, now I'm going to have a few comments on common hurdles. So first, not being prepared or asking enough questions. This is getting at developing that record. Asking for a vote of the audience. That can be a problem as far as handing over control of the meeting and it's not based on a standard. So it's sort of not really finding effect. Showing bias before a decision is made that can lead to losing your governmental immunity protection. That we'll talk about later in the legal and ethical piece. And then attempting to be the architect or applicant, an issue as well. And really, here's the overarching one. The biggest one is avoiding "let's make a deal". So the question is, does the project meet your standards or not? Once we started attaching conditions, especially at the planning commission stage, is where we can lead to some issues with the process, expectations for different kind of treatment, and potential challenge to the process. Okay, so, common hurdles. Avoid showing bias and consider intent as you ask a question. The front page newspaper test is a pretty good one. How would it look if it was distilled into a headline? And basically, on that note, making sure to not use social media to argue condemn a tack or even set the record straight. I don't know, maybe none of us need to be told this one anymore. But social media is sort of more of a difficult tool than anything else. I would say, leave it to staff. And for communities, if you have a public information officer or someone kind of like that. And establish and discuss often your social media policy. So if you don't have one, I would recommend thinking about that and putting something in place. It's just much easier to know ahead of time than deal with something as it comes up. And at that point, it's always going to be kind of heated already. Okay, a couple comments on technology. So we talked about how this has been changing, especially lately. And some of the questions that have been coming up to me through these discussions have been, is it acceptable to be on your phone during a meeting or a hearing? And if you have thoughts, feel free to share them now. So what do you think of this? Is it our right to be on your phone? What if you're using your phone to send out a link to something relevant? When does an email thread or text become subject to open meetings law? These are good questions to ask. And I point them out because there is some developing case law around the country on this. And this is, the one I have listed here is the Fourth Circuit, so it's just persuasive. But they did find that a commissioner's Facebook page was a tool of governance. So depending on how you're using social media and other technology, it can be suddenly open to open meetings law, to other challenges. So it's good to talk about how you use technology and have a policy around it. And has this come up locally? Any issues with these kinds of things?
No, not that we've had an issue with, at least in the last couple of years that I've been aware of.
We've had it, where we've texted people as to, you know, maybe, think about this, or do this, something from somebody, from staff.
Right.
So, and that's about all. I mean, that's about the only I can think of.
Okay, limited.
Really, it's, that's not something, at least, I haven't run into anybody posting anything on Facebook in the middle of a hearing. Good work. That's a good thing, yeah.
That's a good thing.
Things we had discussed at one point was to have a separate email address just for the planning commission, which I did do. I only use that just for the planning commission. So if it ever needs to be brought out, I've got it all in one place and that's all that's there.
But a question is,
It's a good move.
But a question is, anything that transpires during this hearing, whether it's recorded or our text messages, I thought were considered public record. Is that correct?
So I would say it depends on what's going on. If you're reading your messages out aloud, then yeah, it could be. If you are texting with like, two or more other members, then that could be an issue and really should be read out, what's happening. The other thing I would mention is perception issues. So especially of residents in the audience. So that can be important to take into account. Does it seem like you're maybe not paying attention or having some kind of separate conversation? Because if it is just by text, if it's not read into the record, then that kind of talking on the side could be a problem, could be experted.
Okay, that would make sense. Texting staff.
Texting staff, oh yeah, always good to get ahold of staff. But I would say if it's during a meeting, I mean, my conservative advice would be, if it's during a meeting, just to make it public, to read it in. And to always ask your staff. You know, I'm sure Jen has thoughts on how the process goes and issues that can come up and maybe preferences on answering questions. Do you have anything you would add at this point, Jen?
My preference overall would be not to use the phone at all. I would interrupt and make an aside if we need to change the course of the conversation, if we need a clarification. All of that takes place over the microphone so that everyone can hear each step along the way. All of that takes place over the microphone so that everyone can hear each step along the way. Would be my opinion. Greg?
I second the motion.
I've always, if I got a text, I always kind of repeated it publicly so that I know it's on record. Because I assumed that any text we had that occurred during this meeting was public record.
Can you give me an example?
We, it was, I don't know if it's ever happened on the planning commission.
Okay.
As a board.
Okay.
I think if you were getting like texts from citizens or something that were saying.
No, this is more staff. If I got a text from a citizen, you would ignore.
But if you have your device, you wouldn't say you don't even know what's coming in.
Yeah.
You're probably more present in the meeting.
No, you're fine. As long as, but I always assumed if you received a text and it was related to the meeting.
Absolutely.
The application, that becomes part of the record.
Yep, I agree.
Is what I, so.
Okay. Yeah, and I would say to clarify my comment earlier, I would say I do always recommend contacting staff, but I should have added, not necessarily write during the meeting by text. So very much supportive of what Jen said. And that is what I tend to hear from staff planners is, yeah, just ask over the microphone. All right. Okay, let's talk. Oh, was there a comment?
No.
No, okay, thanks. Let's talk a minute about defensible procedures. So the key here is consistency. That's the whole message of this slide. Defensive procedures in, you know, you're noticing and providing the opportunity to be heard, making sure rules are clear, that you're following your process, good findings of fact, that you're having unbiased and timely decisions. There's no sort of statutory timeframe on that, but timely decisions and complete records. So with all of these things, just making sure that you're providing consistency to the greatest extent possible to protect your process, protect yourselves. Why? Because they can be challenged. Quasi judicial actions can be challenged and there's sort of the rule for that. Decisions can be overturned if there's abuse of discretion, exceeding your authority or making arbitrary and capricious decisions. However, your decisions will be upheld if a record of decision demonstrates otherwise. So that record of decision is the key. And related to that, a couple of comments on motions that, you know, just acknowledging that motions can be tough to keep consistent. Your procedures for motions should be agreed upon prior to public hearings. And I recommend switching it up from time to time too. So letting those who are less comfortable or newer practice making motions, maybe even outside of a public hearing if that's helpful. Some communities have done that and said that they prefer it. And the other comment that I'll make is, you know, whether you're gonna start with a motion, then a discussion or disgust and then make a motion. I get questions about best order to do that. And to me, it's sort of tomato, tomato. Keep the discussion focused on whether or not the application meets the standards. Deliberation will communicate how the decision was made to staff, to applicants, to the audience and fingers crossed, not to a judge, but to a judge if needed. A couple of tips that have come up. One thing you could consider if it comes to it is before voting as one complex motion, you can vote on conditions one at a time. You can move to approve for reasons listed in the staff report, as I mentioned. I love that one. And then a few more comments on findings of fact. So findings of fact, these are your factual foundations for your conclusions. It shows how your standards were met. I like to call them the legal breadcrumbs for your decision making. They must address the standards. So the key here is to ask questions designed to get evidence for the record related to those standards. They also show that your adopted process was followed. So if you get challenged, then this is what's gonna show, nope, we had a process in place. We followed it. You can see it here based on the record. They'll conform with the comp plan. Make sure to avoid basing a decision on gut. And then as a tip, you can raise highlights from a work session. So there are some communities who have said, oh, you know, we get some contentious stuff. We need to go to a work session. You know, sometimes that's necessary. And one thing you could do to incorporate findings of fact is to raise highlights from a work session and get them incorporated in there. But these are really critical. And I would say, based on some Colorado case law, something that you could know about what to do in protecting your process and therefore yourselves is that a trial court's review, if they end up, if this were to go before them, it would be based solely on the record that was before the governmental entity. So before you. And the decision must be affirmed by that trial court, your decision, unless there's no competent evidence in the record to support it so that your decision was arbitrary and capricious. So as long as you're focused on developing that good record and tying things back to the standards, should be good to go. And if it were to go to court, then that's what would provide that protection. Remember, on the second slide of tonight, there was a disclaimer that this is not legal advice. I feel like now's a good time to say that.
Real quick on that one too. Could we go back to that for just a minute?
Yeah.
It informs of the comprehensive plan. Generally speaking, any particular application isn't going to comply with all elements of the comprehensive plan. Sometimes you might have some pro and con elements of the comp plan. So you're charged with weighing those things out. Is the, you think it meets the standard more so than doesn't meet the standard more so? But oftentimes, there are things that it may not quite comply fully with the comprehensive plan. And that's okay.
That's it?
Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, that's a good point.
And Greg, speaking of record keeping, are we satisfied with our understanding of requirements of planning commission minutes? Or is that something we want to inquire as to whether there's any statute requirements that we need to be abiding by?
Sure. Dola, what do you think?
So here's the situation, Casey.
There's a significant difference between the minutes that are taken for the planning commission as compared to the minutes for the board.
Exactly.
And I don't know what's required. I'm really not sure.
Yeah, so we're having a little bit of confusion. Our meeting minutes have changed hands a number of times recently and the technique employed by various hands are very different. And so we're trying to get a concrete understanding of what is required in planning commission minutes? Is that self-imposed? Are there state statutes and regulations that we have to abide by, at least in part? So if you could give us a rundown of that, that'd be appreciated.
Or Jen, if the.
Yeah, that is a, oh, go ahead.
Or if the recording would meet for the minutes.
That's an additional question, yeah. And the difference between, the difference between a video and audio record versus written minutes.
Oh, yes. So you're certainly, I'm not aware of anything in statute that would speak to video, audio versus written. So I'm gonna wanna follow up on this, first off, because this is a really good detailed question. And from what I know, there should be some good sort of general deference to local process. So what we tend to recommend getting questions about minutes is thinking about accessibility. So it's good to have recordings. There are some communities who have said, no, we just want the audio because then it's word for word, everything is in there. But then they have started to have sort of questions and sometimes, well, a little bit of challenge. That's a little bit of strong word for it, for accessibility for people who can't access sort of audio impaired citizens. So I tend to recommend having something that's written as well. To the extent that it needs to be kind of word for word or make sure to have all of the information or information changes from the time of that meeting to going to the board, that's where I say I'd like to follow up and see if there's anything that statutes on that. Because I don't think that there is, but I prefer to do a little bit more digging for you if you wouldn't mind waiting for me to find that answer.
Not at all. We appreciate that a lot.
Okay. And I write it down now so that I don't forget. Okay. That's a good one. I'm telling you, there's always something new going on everywhere.
That the factual foundations that are talked about here and the facts and addressing the standards, that those are things that we should have in the staff report. So you should be able to read through that on page two, three, four, whatever the heck it is. There's description of those code requirements and how this does or does not meet those particular standards. So you should have kind of those breadcrumbs that are talked about in front of you as part of that staff report.
Good point. Love the staff report. Okay, anything else on here before we move on to final tips?
No, thank you.
Okay. So a couple of comments. Detailed deliberation informs better motions, the community and a judge on how a decision was made. So avoid vague or nonspecific motions. You know, basic rule, would someone understand 10 years later why a decision was made? What? Watch for bias, especially against difficult people. Look for legitimate points and solutions. Don't be afraid to say, I don't know. That's totally fine. You know, planning commission is a local expert, but even experts don't know everything. Couldn't possibly, it's too much. So don't be afraid to say, I don't know. I have to do that in these often, like I just did about the meeting notes. You don't need to explain or apologize for the process. It is what it is, it ensures fairness. And beware side conversations, like we were just talking about similar use of electronics during meetings. And here, I put this in bold because I think it's the most important at the bottom of the slide. If they don't like the outcome, they're likely to attack the process. So I don't know to what extent you come across this, but there's some communities I've talked with that do all kinds of gymnastics to try and avoid challenge and go outside their process. And more often than not, it just leads to a later attack. And it will be because the process wasn't followed despite all the efforts that were made.
Very familiar, yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry to hear that, but you are far from alone. Very common issue. So I just wanna show you here before we get into quite the set of scenario questions. This is something, some graphics that I pulled from Lakewood Speaks. And so this is a remote participation approach that Lakewood started. I think, I wanna say that they started developing this in 2016 because they got their data in 2019. So this is all actually pre-COVID. No, not being forced, just trying to decide how can we do better for participation? They wanted to increase engagement, expand awareness and save money and time if they could. So they built this online engagement platform called Lakewood Speaks. And the results were pretty phenomenal. And they increased public participation by 800%, if you can believe that. Online comment accumulation, it decreased the meeting time so that, you know, three minutes per person versus being able to do online comments was helpful. And it meant that their cost per participant dropped from $97 to $2.77. Staff time was cut by 87%. And their staff said that they were able to finally work on their backlog of other work, which made them very happy. And they also had minimal disruption when they were dealing with COVID stuff because they already had this in place. So the other thing that I wanna point out is there's a little red arrow pointing at a bar chart. And what that is showing you is when their participation was happening. So what they ended up finding out was this little valley in that bar chart is at, let me see, yeah, six, seven, up to 8:30 PM. So where they were experiencing their big dip after a lot of participation in the day was exactly the time that they used to hold their public meetings. And that really made them pause and think about people's availability and to what extent they were providing access to the public venue. So this has worked well for them. It's pretty beefy. I mean, I think there are probably a lot of ways that this could be scaled. But if you're interested, they've got a lot of information online and their staff are super excited to talk about it. So I'm sure they'd be happy to connect further. Oh, they also got more participation by a whole bunch of different age groups too. All right. Final comment here before our scenario questions is sort of an old truism. A popular decision isn't always good. A good decision's not always popular. But, you know, here on the planning commission, it's your responsibility to protect the current and future of public health, safety and welfare, even if it's not popular. So it's that police power that comes to us through the Constitution and is for current and future public health, safety and welfare. So now, lots of opportunity for discussion. I know it's been quite a lot of information. I appreciate the interruptions you made. Some good info on what's happening locally. So let's see how some of these go. Here, our first decision making scenario question is, and tell me by the way if this happens, or not really so much. But here, a local developer brings updated plans to staff the day before the hearing. There's pressure for the staff to allow the applicant to make these last minute changes. What should the staff do? Got some options here for you. Maybe you'll have others. A is quickly forward the new information to the planning commission and amend the staff report. B is explain to the developer why this is not appropriate or workable. C, explain that the locally adopted process is the one that must be followed to ensure staff, referral staff, if that's part of the process, and agencies and everyone basically have sufficient time to review. Who wants to? C, nice, decisive. And yes, correct. I think B could also work, but C is the clear winner, I think. So, you know, this is getting at what are the local requirements? That everyone needs to have the same information. If there are referrals, it gets extra tricky. And then also, there are some instances where perhaps we need to delay a hearing, do a continuance, something like that. Well done, right out the gate. Okay, another. An unpopular development application would likely go over a lot better if they had a better design. So you decide to impose a condition of approval, a design standard that has not been adopted because it will calm opponents and make a better project. So is this a worthwhile and pragmatic solution? Yes, no? Other thoughts?
No.
No? Got some no's? Yeah, I'd agree with you. I mean, I don't know. I guess pragmatic, but I think it really sort of opens the process up to challenge. And also, it exceeds the authority, right? If it's a standard that town hasn't adopted, then that's exceeding authority, opening up to legal challenge, losing governmental immunity. All kinds of problems can follow from that. It can also set precedent for future applicants if they know that they can try and work the system.
Well, would you view that as a PUD? If they are asking for some different standards than what's usually in the code and there's some trade off for that, that perhaps you could enter the design standard to help make that condition that they're proposing more palatable?
Yeah, that's a good point. Because PU, I guess, I'll call it the benefit of PUDs is they do allow for more negotiation. So they are a little bit of a unique beast. And then this gets to where I'm not sure how your local code treats a PUD as far as compared to other projects. So I would have some questions for your code, some questions for Jen maybe. Feel free to jump in if you'd like to, by the way. Or not.
Specifically not. No, I would agree. I didn't realize this particular question. But yes, I think that that is, while we don't wanna call it a loophole, it's an option that opens up the availability of creating those different standards within the PUD. But I think that that needs to be early on in the conversation. It needs to be planned that way, not as a, during the meeting, oh, we should go about this as a PUD so that we can work this angle.
Or it shouldn't be done at the planning commission meeting.
Shouldn't be done.
Right.
Should be done negotiating before.
Want it shorter? Okay, we'll make it a little shorter, but can we get more shrubs?
Yeah. Yeah, right on. You all are pros. Okay. Does that come up much?
Some, yeah.
Okay. Okay, how about this one? Sure, this never happens. You've been busy. Never happens, right? You did not get a chance to review your pack-up before the hearing. What should you do? Lots of options. Here are some ideas. A, don't show up to the meeting. B, contact staff to find out if there'll be a quorum, get their advice. C, email other members to get their thoughts on how you should vote. D, call your chair to see what they think. Call it out.
I think B is probably a better one.
Yeah. I'd agree with that. B is good. Oops, where am I going? B, yeah, so B is good, and really, to me, the key is not, not C. Making sure not to do C, that would be an open meetings violation, could be bias or prejudgment. Yeah, problems with C. Okay, how about this one? A well-respected citizen at the public hearing stands up and asks for a vote of the audience. Touched on this earlier. They want to demonstrate how many people there are in opposition to the project. So in this, in this one, what should the chair do? Some thoughts. A, ask the citizen to please sit down, take control of the audience. B, thank the citizen for showing up, provide comments, and explain how the process works. C, remind the person... Explain audience votes, how they dissuade people from expressing their views. Or D, have police escort the person out of the room.
That's what they did in Virginia.
And I'll say, funny enough, there is a community who told me that they do like to have police presence at meetings and that it calms down their audience, which I, I've only heard that from one, but I want to flag it because it exists. So maybe not escorting people out, but there is one community who likes to go that route. So yeah, on here, I would say B or C. And this one's really getting at not turning over control of the hearing. It could also, by the way, encourage people to figure out that packing the audience is a way to influence the final decision, which can be a problem. And probably what's happened is the rules were right at the outset, the chair can remind them of the rules. And then the other piece is that this isn't a finding of fact. So it's not going to help sort of do anything. Actually, there's that, and then the other piece is that those who show up don't necessarily represent the community at large and that it is the role of the Planning Commission to keep the entire community in mind. Okay. The next one. A citizen in the audience starts asking applicants questions. Does this happen for you all? Is it acceptable? We've got, oh, and by the way, it says yes, because you cannot stop or hinder free speech, or no, questions must be directed or raised to the board and commission.
B.
B. Yeah, I'd agree with you. There are some communities who get pretty itchy about hindering free speech. But it really, for the purpose of protecting due process and everything we've talked about, it seems like you all know it actually is most important to protect rights by following the process. Hundred percent. Well done, okay. Waiting for you guys to stumble on one, I don't know if it's going to happen. An opponent of a project challenges the time limit, demanding the full time that she needs to provide her testimony. What should the chair do? Perhaps thank her for her testimony, remind her there's a time limit that has to be followed? B, go ahead and give her another minute? C, allow her to exceed the time only if others in the audience will give her their time? A? Yeah, I'd say A. Possibly B, some communities, their process is a bit of a B process, but no matter what, consistency is going to be the key. The rules, whatever they are, were right at the outset. You know, some commissions actually don't even impose time limits because they want to give people all the time that they want to speak their minds. But I would say on that one, if, for any commission that does proceed that way, a time limit couldn't be imposed later without appearing unfair, so that could be a bit of an issue. Okay. Next up. In this one, the chair has asked people not to repeat testimony, but someone is saying something pretty much the same as the last guy. What should the chair do? Cut him off as quickly as possible so it doesn't get out of hand, we don't have all night? Or B, allow people giving testimony, there are a lot of time, despite whether they repeat others, what others have said? What are your thoughts?
Oh, we do. I get the, I get the B. I mean, I... Most of the time, people are saying the same thing.
Yeah, it does happen. Are there any other approaches you've taken?
Yeah, I have, but it doesn't seem to help, does it?
Yeah, that can happen. You know, there are some commissions who have told me, well, you know what? We ask, ask for only new comments. That's worked for them. Others have said, oh, we just ask people to raise their hand if they would just agree with what was just said. So I'd say those things can work to varying degrees. And as long as there's some good, being courteous and demonstrating listening, it seems to go well.
But wouldn't you say...
Oh, right.
Wouldn't you say that someone who says, hey, how many people kind of have that same feeling? Now you have a bunch of anonymous hands raised that are not part of the record. And if you, you know, capture, you know, all of their names and their addresses and how they raised their hand, I think you could get into some question.
Yeah, that's a good point. Maybe that would work just in a very small situation where the hands could be counted and then that could be sort of read into the record. Yeah. Yeah, I think you raise a good point. I honestly don't, wouldn't advise that as an approach. Does happen. Okay, we have only a couple more here. So in this one, someone testifies and argues your point or contradicts you in a public hearing. Do you engage in debate to ensure the correct point is heard? We've got a no, because you're not there to win people over to your viewpoint. You're there to hear and consider the facts. Or B, yes, the record must be made clear who's right, which facts are correct. And C, no, avoid debate, but when his testimony is complete, restate your point to avoid confusion. Yeah. Yeah, I'd agree with that. So I would, I would add that your point's on the record and it would, it would keep the quorum in place. Although I will say that one community sort of pushed me on this one and said, "Okay, yeah, but we've had issues with people providing false information. So, you know, what do we do? We, we do need to sort of correct that, don't we?" And ultimately, the answer on that one was, well, deal with it during the Planning Commission discussion section. So that, so that's made clear. So false information has come up and can be a particularly slippery issue, but yeah. Generally, A.
That might be something, too, that staff could correct after perhaps all the testimony has been held. That, you know, if somebody's saying there's a tree on the property, there's no tree on the property. Well, we've been out to the property, we saw that there was no tree there. And, you know, we could, we could testify to what we know about that particular side of that situation.
We've had, we've done.
We've had it happen.
We've had that happen. We have. And been able to state things.
So it almost ends up being more of a timing thing. So we are not immediately engaging with this person who is making their statement. You let them have their say, and then at the discussion phase, then you can work some of those pieces out for clarification, check in with the staff, if necessary.
That's kind of the way we try to handle it. Yeah, we try to take all the input and then reference it back to staff and the applicant to see if we can address.
Yep.
You know, and then, then it ends up either the applicant or staff is clearing up, you know, the issues or incorrect statements or something. So we try to do that.
Yeah, I know. That's the best way to do it, I think. That way, you're not getting into a debate.
Then we're not debating with people. Right, Van?
Yeah. Yes, very well put. Okay, if you don't mind, I'll skip to the last one because this next one is really about should you attach conditions or not? And I think we've covered that pretty well. Not exceeding authority. So here is perhaps my favorite. The applicant claims the Planning Commission decision has essentially removed the highest and best use of their property. Is this a reasonable expectation? And here we've got, A, no, case law supports that no one has the right to expect that. B is, yes, the Constitution protects everybody's ability to do what they please with their land. Was there an answer? Sorry.
Not yet.
Okay. Need to play some Jeopardy music.
What was that, Danny?
Depends on if you're a town or a county. Really? There's a lot of different, there's a lot of different expectations when you're dealing with towns and when you're dealing with counties.
Right.
I, I would...
We are more with what they want to do with their land.
Yeah, well, but you still have to abide by the rules and regulations. Yeah, the code, yeah. That's where the, that's where I have a problem with B.
Yeah. There are.
Well... They still have to abide by the code and regulations. Yeah, et cetera. They can't just do whatever they want to with the land, so. That's, and that's where the problem is. If you do need to, if you had added in the ability to do in accordance with the law or regulations, then yeah, that's fine.
See, like in our codes, we have, there are things you can't do with properties. When you look at the tables, you have different things. So when you look at B specifically, you take, you know, are you, do you have the right to do anything you want with your property? Well, actually, no. Because basically, in our codes, there are limits to whatever size lot you have.
Oh, I'm mute.
Yes. And that is governed through our codes. So I mean, now, we don't go further than that. We don't put, we don't, so far, we haven't put limitations. Well, we have. In some areas, we have, we don't establish, what I would say, specific zones where only certain type of development can happen and, you know, to a, to a large extent. But we allow, we are flexible enough to allow a zone change.
Yes.
As we had recently, that was a completely different zoning.
It was.
Which is appropriate if it's falling into the larger plan.
But you're still, you're still abiding by the regulations.
You're still abiding by, the only time we get outside of what the regulations say is like when you look at an S U R. Those are ones we'll evaluate, the property and, you know.
It's discretion.
A review.
You have the ability to say yes, you have the ability to say no.
Yeah. So...
So there. Hey. Yeah, well done. I'll tell you what, I think the discussion you just had is the best that I have witnessed on this question. So I wish I had some, I don't know, trophy or whatever. Well done. You headed in just the right direction. Yeah, this is getting at, like you mentioned, hey, rights are limited, in this case, in the code. And what this is really getting at is people like to throw around legal words for, to try and flex their muscle, you know? So a taking is a violation of the Fifth and Fourteenth Amendments of the US Constitution. But what it is, is it's a removal of all economically viable use. So one story that I like to tell is, there's one county who said, Mountain County, and they said, "Well, we tell people that a cabin is an economic use." And what they meant by that was, they were having an issue where people really wanted to build these really large cabins in their area and they were sort of not allowed for a variety of reasons. And, but what people could build was a little tiny cabin that maybe you would stay in overnight, if you're cool roughing it, but not very comfortable, not what people really wanted to do there. But just for geographic constraints, they couldn't. So that's what they would tell people. A cabin, albeit an uncomfortable one, is still an economically beneficial use. So you can still do something with your land. And then I would say, as a practice pointer, if there is a threat of litigation, that's a situation where a continuance would be appropriate. So if there's new information or uncertainty about criteria or threat of litigation, great opportunities for a continuance. Okay. That was awesome. Great discussion. We have our last sort of main chunk now, the legal and ethical issues piece. And so as a reminder of the types of actions we're going to be talking about, and the key here is legal and ethical considerations in this type of work because what we're doing is protecting people's due process. So if you're in a quasi-judicial role, you might think differently to ensure due process for individuals, you know, adequate notice so they can participate, a fair process, making sure that you're being impartial, that kind of stuff. So let's dig in, and as promised, here is a little chart for you. And what this is getting at is the types of actions that you may be taking and whether they're legislative, is that first column, or quasi-judicial in that final... Or not first, I guess technically legislative is the second. Or quasi-judicial is that third one on the end. So here is just a little visual to show that, you know, if you're doing something like master plan, that's legislative. Comp plan or comprehensive zoning, legislative. Zoning text amendments, legislative. Piecemeal rezonings kind of get a little funky. But then, once we get into special exceptions, variances, subdivision approval, zoning arguments, clearly quasi-judicial. So rezoning, I put down here at the bottom, rezoning is both legislative and quasi-judicial. That's because, it's quasi-judicial because we can't have ex parte communications and it can be challenged. But it's legislative for the purposes of being challengeable by initiative and referendum. So lots of opportunity for challenge in that one, which makes it a little bit of both, and why it has two X's there. The idea is, how do you feel? You feeling like a judge, or you feeling like a lawmaker? And there are a few things that we need to dive into in this legal ethical section. The first one is ex parte. And bear with me, this definition is pretty long, but it's critical. So, ex parte is any written or verbal communication initiated outside of a regularly noticed public hearing. And it's between an official with decision-making authority and one or more of the parties, but not all, that are subject, that are, well, about a subject that is under or about to be under consideration by the official, where they're seeking to influence or present information about the subject. A few more comments. To preserve public confidence and due process rights, the board or commission should ensure the public and interested parties have an opportunity to know and respond to all the information that's being considered. So, ex parte, it's improper because all applicants requesting a decision by a local body acting within their scope are entitled to due process. So for citation purposes, that's, you know, Fifth Amendment of the Constitution, Fourteenth Amendment of the Constitution, and the Colorado Constitution as well. And it's just that basic, you know, no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, or property without due process. Okay, so since we're talking about property rights here, in land use applications, all three of those do apply. And what should you do? This gets tricky, I mean, it just gets tricky. You're in a grocery store, you're wherever, and people want to talk about what's going on. My advice is, well, you know, take it with a grain of salt. This is, you know... This is, um, you know, you know the position that I'm in, and I like to give kind of conservative advice. So, what I like to say is, um, the best approach is to stop the person who is, um, who has approached you. Explain why it's inappropriate. Disclose the contact first to staff and then again at the meeting. In, in some instances, recusal and leaving the room may be, um, necessary. If you don't have them, consider adopting formal procedures. It just makes things so much, um, cleaner if there's a process ahead of time. Do you have a process in place, by the way?
Well, I'm looking at the expert and he's looking at me, so I don't think so.
No, we don't. I don't.
Okay. So, unknown then. Okay, well, um, if you, if you look and find that you don't consider adopting, uh, something because it's so much cleaner just to know what someone will have to do ahead of time, once the exact situation is presented, you know, we're human, we get into over analysis mode, it can become a little stickier. And then encourage that person to participate in the process. Here are a couple examples. Chaffey County's got a, um, some language on their website that just explains, you know, this is what ex parte is, here's why it's a problem, here's what you should do. So, you can provide that kind of notice publicly, it's a good, um, background thing to have. But if you're looking for something more active, um, Wheat Ridge, uh, gives their commissioners these little business card sized things. Um, so, this is an answer to how to still be helpful and keep people engaged. And what they do is they say, "Sorry, can't talk to you, here's why," and do all the disclosures and stuff. And then they give them a card that has the information for how that person can, can engage. And so, it's, um, sort of a empowerment move. And then finally, uh, Littleton answers the question of, "How do you know when an application is received and you can no longer discuss it?" Because if you remember from that definition, it's something that's under review or about to be under review, and what does that mean? Um, well, so Littleton's staff send out an email as soon as something is submitted, and so, of course, that comes with a timestamp, and everyone knows that thereafter not to talk about it. Um, I will say that where the line is on that is something that, under Colorado law, is a gray area. So, if you're wondering what it means for something to be about to be under review, then, um, then, well, maybe ask staff, but really, usually I say ask your attorney, um, because they'll have some, some good advice on that that you'll want to follow. Okay, let's break up this section. We'll get back to more legal ethical stuff, but we've got a scenario here about site visits. Here, you're on a site visit before a hearing, and the owner or rep meets you to let you in. Um, they don't talk to you, but they do shadow you, and you're pretty sure a neighbor saw you. What do you do? A is you, um, don't need to stir up suspicion by disclosing it. Uh, you know you didn't talk to them, that's what matters, so it's not ex parte. B is disclose it at the hearing, that they let you in, but you didn't talk, you know, and then proceed to vote. C is call staff ahead of time, give them a heads up, get advice. D is don't go on any site visits anymore. That's how we'll avoid that. What do you think?
C.
Was that, did I hear B or C?
B.
Yeah. And I really, I think, um, either of those, actually. And this one is getting at, um, perception as well, so, uh, trying to avoid A and D, and, um, and recognizing that some kind of action does need to, um, be taken. Um, and then here, you know, I, I like to include this picture because, oh man, si- uh, site visits are so helpful, but with ex parte, and it can be a little bit of a, uh, sand trap, and also, um, it's a car, so drive-by visits can be helpful. Is that something that you all do, or, or what other ways do you take a look at a site without inviting ex parte?
So, I'm kind of interested, um, in your thoughts on this. Um, we've got a nine-member planning commission. If we've got, give or take, half of them have driven by a site and the other half have not, um, is there any concern that some of the judges or the jury that sits and, and rules on this have additional information that others do not? Would it be, um, A, better to put them all in a van together? Um, you'd have to have, you know, no conversation outside of that, I guess. B, uh, better to, um, have them all drive by, but what do you do with the one straggler that didn't go by? Um, I'm kind of interested in your, your thoughts on this.
Yeah, that's a good question. Um, I, I tend to say that, um, I like to see consistency, and different commissions handle it different ways. So, there are some who do load everyone in a van, they drive, they, you know, drive by it, don't have contact, everyone gets to see the same thing. Others say, "Nope, it stops there, um, and we just disclose it and, um, and move on." Others do a, they'll use like Google Earth, and then so that everyone can see it together and, um, and see it that way, so just avoiding visiting it physically. Um, and for me, I, I have questions depending on where we're at in the timeline of, of the project. So, something else that I would wonder is, um, what do you all, so there's this one scenario, but what do you all tend to do? Do you have, um, a standard practice? And again, staff, if you want to jump in, since part of the last question was asking staff for their advice, please do offer that.
Uh, we don't have a standard prac- practice. And I don't know if it's ever been, uh, a discussion, you all who have been here for a while, have you ever actually chatted about trying to organize that sort of thing? And part of the problem is, we're so far flung. Everybody is in, um, all across the county and trying to coordinate individual lives to get quorum, let alone have everybody gather together and actually go on a field trip, uh, can be challenging. So, uh, no, we don't. I have had in the past, uh, planning commissioners say during the hearing, "I did stop by, I walked on the property, or I walked up to the edge of the property, or I drive by every day and I see this along the way." Um, that has been helpful to me. Um, it was actually a little bit of a surprise, Danny, um, within the last year, when we actually had some people making an effort to go and, and do site visits.
Yeah. One of the things we've done is when we've talked to people, and I think even when I mentioned to people, as, as you come on the planning commission as, as new members, I think one of the things that I know I've mentioned is that, you know, what you do is you read the application, sometimes a site visit is good, and I've, I've actually stated, you know, it's, it's good to go, go view the site, so you get an idea of what you're dealing with. So, I know I've said that to quite a few members, new members.
Mm-hmm. And that's probably why we're seeing it more.
Yeah, and, and now we're questioning whether.
Right.
That's the right thing to do or not. But I.
Well, I, I personally will go by anything I can that's within range and time.
Yeah.
And, uh, to me, it gives me a, a much better idea of what exactly we're dealing with. But, uh, there's a lot of them that you can't get by, and, you know, we've got deadlines of when people can have stuff in. And it used to be 10 days before, so that you had three days to get it ready, and we'd have the package seven days before the meeting. And, uh, that gives us a little more time to actually, um, be able to review it and go by. But, you know, every once in a while, it's, the, the package is late, or we don't get all of it, or, or something like that, or something is added at the last minute, and then, then it's given to us, uh, so- sometimes even at the meeting, we'll get an additional letter. And, and there's got to be a cutoff of, uh, information going into that package, and at that point, uh, if they, if they come up with something that's material and they want to add it, then it'll have to be continued. Um, but going by them, that's something that I, I like to do, and if I can, I will.
And I think it's appropriate, some of us are visual, and seeing a bunch of paper and trying to make sense of it, you know, um, may or may not be as, uh, helpful until you go look at the property, if, even if you're just staying on the perimeter and not, um, accessing the property unless it's a public access. Um, you know, I think it's appropriate for us to, at least my opinion, it's, it's appropriate for me to go and, from the road and see the property. Obviously, I don't want to, um, engage with any, anything, but, uh, I think it's appropriate to look.
One of the things that I learned early on is that if someone wants to talk to you while you're out there, and they, they want to know what you're doing, and you can tell them that I'm doing a site visit with the planning commission, well, if they start to tell you something about it, you can tell them, "I cannot take testimony outside of the meeting, and if you want to bring that information to the meeting, the meeting is scheduled for so and so." And that's the way I leave it.
Greg, so do you have any? I know, I know we're trying to figure it out. Um, but do you have any thoughts based on your experience and this little bit of conversation that we want to have as food for thought? Is it still a, a moving target?
I think it's still kind of being considered or talked about. I think, you know, Danny and I talked about this topic the other day. Um, and I, I, I don't think that there's a strong push to do away with those. Um, I, I've been in other organizations that they're, you know, not in favor of them. So, kind of was bringing that up a little bit. Had, you know, a little bit of tepid support from Bart about that. Uh, he's our, our county attorney. Um, but it wasn't a, you know, boy, we better not, and I'm not hearing from Dola, but horrible idea, don't have three of you go and four of you don't.
I agree with that.
Well, one of the, the, the things that I've noticed, and, and this is, is that the applications that we get are very detailed, and generally, they have a lot of information in it, particularly about issues that might come up, the, the maps and everything really give you a good idea of where it's at, what it's, you know, what is. Now, if, if I don't, as a normal practice, go drive by because I, you know, I can figure out what, what's going on just from the application. If I can, that's when I'll go do it. So, it's not a case of where I need to do it every time, it's just a case of when, if I'm not understanding something, then I'll go look at it, or if it's something that is, is really, uh, an, an issue, then yeah, maybe I, I might want to go, go look and see if, you know, do they, do they really, is it really what it says it is, so.
Yeah, I would generally not be in favor of, you know, putting you all in a van.
No, no way.
Just don't talk about what we're going to go look at. Don't say a word.
Yeah.
I would caution.
Only, only if, if, if our commi- county commissioners join us.
Right. We'll keep all the citizens aware, right?
Yeah, right.
I heard, uh, at one point, a mention of Google Earth. I would caution you when you use Google Earth. Um, the imagery is often, uh, significantly aged, and so what you're seeing in that, uh, in, in those aerial images is not necessarily reflective of what's going on there. You can use it as a reference, but I would rely more on the information, like Van said, that you're getting in the packet. And if you want any clarifying information, um, during the hearing, say, "I kind of am familiar with it in this way, the packet says this, can we get a little more information to flesh out those details?" Um, I, I would encourage everybody to be transparent about what they have experienced. If you do happen to be there, um, make sure that as you're describing a space, you're keeping any personal bias or opinion out of that. It's, this is located here, I experienced a massing of trees, as Greg used trees earlier, trees over here, that I'm not seeing reflected in other places, can we have more information about that? That sort of thing. So, um, ask questions based on, on what you're seeing, and, uh, hopefully, we can get the, any doubt or question eliminated. Um, but until further notice, I guess we're kind of leaving it up to everyone to, to make the decision whether they go or not. Um, and what you carry away with you is, I think should be influenced more on the packet than anything else.
Yeah, those are just great comments. Wonderful. Um, yes, that's all I have, yes. Great points. Okay, so, seeing the time, I'm going to, um, pick up the pace a little bit, and, um, and then I also, we have a few scenario questions coming up that I may just, um, talk you through, um, because your discussion tonight has been fantastic, and frankly, more robust than a lot of commissions. So, it's, it's thrown off the timeline, but oh my goodness, well worth it. Um, so, thank you for that, but if you don't mind, I'll, um, move us through this a little bit quicker than we've been going. A couple comments on conflicts of interest. There is a conflict when you're a member of a governing body and you have a personal or private interest in the matter pending before you. Um, so I want to say here, it's not a conflict to have an opinion. A, a conflict arises when you act on that opinion and personally benefit rather than putting the public interest first. So, I get a lot of questions about like, "Yeah, but I could kind of incrementally benefit along with all these others." Um, it's a little bit more than that. So, if you do have a conflict, um, then you, you are required by law to do all of these things. Disclose it to staff and at the hearing. Don't vote, um, and don't attempt to influence the votes of others. There is an exception. So, if, even if you have a conflict, you can vote if and only if your participation is necessary to achieve a quorum or otherwise enable the body to act, and you made appropriate disclosure, um, ahead of time, which is, you know, you'd have, I would say, look, reference back to the statute, but it's, uh, dis- written disclosure to the Secretary of State prior to official action. So, know that there is an out if you absolutely must participate, there's a way to do that. Um, so, this scenario is sort of digging in, and it's getting at, it says that someone says, "Hey, you have a conflict," because you always vote no. Um, and the answer here is, this might be biased, but it's not a conflict. Um, and that's pretty much it. This one gets at, you're convinced that your fellow member has a conflict, what do you do? And I'll tell you what, commissions have all kinds of answers to this one. Some say, "Talk to them directly." Um, others say, "Talk with staff and get guidance," that's a great answer. Um, raise your concern in the meeting before it's heard, not as good of an answer. It really, I've seen, depends on kind of the local culture, where some commissions have said, "It would be rude for me not to just talk to this person, you know, we're close." And others have said, "No, we got to have the process, we'll just, you know, keep it kind of, um, more that way." So, anything you would add to that? Just a, a quick 30-second addition, if you have one?
I would say that, uh, B on there is a horrible idea. Don't get together as three or more.
No, no.
Talk about anything related to planning commission business.
Just blow up the meeting.
Talk with the P C member.
Yeah, definitely.
If you talk with the P C member before the hearing, let's say, "You think somebody has a conflict, I want to talk to somebody about it, we can't talk to each other, that's ex parte communication, however, I can go and tell the person, you know what, you probably should talk to staff and, and, and ask them about a possible conflict of interest." That's what I would do.
Good.
So.
Perfect.
Okay, that's kind of where.
Well done, yes.
Yes.
Great. Okay, we've got one slide on open meetings. So, we have the Colorado Sunshine Law, um, which is, public notice is required for meetings where formal action occurs, public business is discussed, or a quorum is present. Minutes are required when there's formal action. Um, and as a suggested rule of practice, just keep everything open, noticed, and have minutes. Uh, just kind of keeps things clean. This is one of my favorite questions, but I am going to speed us through it. It's, after a rough hearing, the planning commissioners want to grab a beer and relax and unwind, are there issues? Um, and so, some options are, this could be seen as an unnoticed public meeting, the perception could be, this is where the real work gets done, or it's okay after a public, um, hearing, but not before. And really, um, it's A or B, and the thought here is, there's a high potential to discuss business. business, and that the perception could be as impactful on public trust as reality. And really, you know, maybe it's some hoops, but you can always notice it, and then you're good to go. Thanks for hanging with me as I speed. Colorado Governmental Immunity Act, we've referenced several times tonight. So, this protects government officials when acting within the scope of their duties. However, it can be lost if you prejudge a matter, these get worse as we go, by the way. If you prejudge a matter, engage in ex parte, make a decision that violates law, act beyond the scope of your authority, ignore or go against publicly given legal advice, or ignore or act outside the bounds of established procedures or ordinances. So, again, not going beyond the, not going beyond authority, very important. So, I think I'll pick just one of these for us to discuss, but I'll read us through this one. In this one, the mayor, who has been a leader for decades, calls the newest planning commissioner a few days before a hearing to give background, just friendly background from someone in the know. Is there an issue with this approach? And so, some of these are saying, oh, you know, there might be, they might feel pressure, this is a good intention, but it's ex parte. Or C is, as long as the mayor just gives background, that's totally fine. And really, this is getting at, that's ex parte. So, would sure be helpful to get that information, but cannot. Okay, this one is, after the vote at a planning commission hearing, one member decides to testify at the town board meeting to represent the minority opinion. Here are the options, and let's, let's consider this one together. A is, planning commission member does not give up their right to testify as a citizen, and it could be helpful for the board to hear them. B, it can be divisive to allow the losing side of the vote to essentially appeal their decision. And C is, if the town board remands the decision back with new information, then that member wouldn't be able to hear the matter because they engaged in, in that other ex parte conversation. Yeah, that's true. Yeah, I think B is true, C is true. If it gets remanded, then, then that could be a problem for that member. And then the other thing is, well, yeah, the other thing is that, you know, you could take comfort, or this person, hypothetical person could take comfort, that they're already on the record, so that will go to the elected body. And, you know, another comment that I sometimes make is, it's kind of like getting two bites at the apple. There's some sort of extraordinary influence that a planning commissioner gets to have as compared to an everyday citizen, so that could be another piece of it as well.
So is it?
And then this final one, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry, sorry. Is it fair to say that they do give up their right to testify as a citizen?
I mean.
Because they're voting, they're giving, they're giving their opinion or they're testifying of their approval or disapproval with their vote, right?
Yeah, and I, I guess I hesitate because I would want to think on that language a little. That's a place, I mean, that's as far as I would like to go, in just sort of a way to protect the process. So, I'd want to think on that language, but effect, I mean, effectively, yes. Like, I would very strongly, very, in the strongest terms, discourage taking that kind of action.
The board can actually review the planning commission meeting. Correct?
The board can review what? Sorry.
The planning commission meeting.
Yes.
They can go back and they can review that information prior to their hearing. Correct?
Correct.
So, for information gathering on their part?
Yeah, so like, because there's times I wanted to hear what the planning commission had, had said.
Yep.
You know, in some hearings. So, we went back and referenced what was, some of the comments and stuff like that. So, on the other side, a planning commissioner probably shouldn't go and do it, go stand up in a, in a board meeting, make comments. However, a planning commissioner could submit an email, a document to the file that would get to the board.
I think that's reasonable to say.
That's, that's what, because that, that would be a much more professional way to give the board input if you had.
Without opening yourself to public scrutiny and conflict.
And I think that's legal, because after you're done with the hearing, you are still, you are a citizen, and you do have the right to comment. Now, granted, it doesn't look good doing it good this way, but if you wanted to make comments, you could.
But don't we also get an opportunity as a planning commission to, there's commissioner comments?
Yes.
During a meeting.
Yes, during a meeting.
So, I have a perfect opportunity to say my opinion on.
Yes.
So, I think that works.
Yeah, that's why we go around the table and everybody kind of make a comment as to what they, yeah.
Yeah, I think that works or suffices for me.
The difference would be, the Board of County Commissioners is not necessarily going to go back, and Grant, I'm speaking for you, not necessarily going to go back and review the, the conversation during the planning commission hearing. If you wanted to make sure that your comment was heard by them, by adding it to the packet in advance, is probably the best way to be heard.
What Danny said is right. If he should issue some kind of a statement or a document to the packet, who reads it?
Yep.
That would be the most professional way to provide your input if you had.
And assure it was heard. Yep, yep. Okay, Casey.
Sorry, Casey.
Very nice. No, great, great conversation, Antonia. Okay, this last one, I'll talk us through. An elected official decides to attend a planning commission public hearing for a controversial project and provide public testimony. Is this okay? So, this is the flip of that. And the potential answers here are, the elected official does not give up their right to testify as a citizen. It can be helpful to hear their perspective, they'll decide on this project. B is, it's okay as long as the planning commission has the final decision-making power on this project, and it will not go to them, to the Board or Commission. C is, this could be perceived as the elected official influencing the planning commission. It could also be perceived as prejudging if the project is called up to the Board or Commission after that hearing.
Can I speak to that?
Of course you can, please.
Because I don't think it would be fair. What we want is a solid, well-thought-out recommendation that's made to us, and we shouldn't be influencing that well-thought-out recommendation.
Oh, yes. So, I think we're in agreement. C is great. And as we talked about in the last one, you know, the electeds have access to that public record of, of the planning commission meeting or hearing, and, and yeah, wonderful. Elected officials do have sort of extraordinary influence, and 100%, well done. Okay, I recognize we're a little over, but guess what? We are at the end. So, as I mentioned, I kept just a couple of these slides that originated from how to deal with planning during a pandemic, but I think still apply. So, I keep it here because there's some resources that I would just like to mention. So, we've got some basic lessons learned that have come up. Some of them are really sort of pandemic-specific, but some of them not, right? Like, any disruption kind of leads communities more in the direction of looking at budgeting and fiscal health, looking at inclusivity, looking at public space and facilities, or affordable housing. So, to that point, we have some early resources on our website, you know, considerations with budget and taper, elections and taxes. I, I did some kind of resource document on virtual meetings and that kind of thing. So, that's a good place for some information, and a lot more has been developed in the past, you know, I don't know, time's all so relative now, in the past recently. There's also the Colorado Resiliency Office. They've got a whole bunch of information. So, this screenshot is of their COVID page, but you can see that they've got all of these pieces up here on their site, and I kind of hovered over for the screenshot where they have a planning tab. And so, you can look at examples of resiliency frameworks or integrating resilience into existing plans. They've got sample language, we can find sample plans from them. So, if you're interested in a resiliency lens for sort of whatever purpose, there's kind of a laundry list that communities pick and choose from, then know that the Colorado Resiliency Office exists and has got a whole bunch of support for you, and I can get you in touch if you'd like. And so, with that, a quick slide on just everything we covered tonight, which is quite a lot. We did importance of and authority to plan, relationships with all of the players, integrate and implement your plans and policies, consider meeting management and decision-making carefully, leaving solid findings and record of decision, talking about ethical issues together, which was just great discussion. And then know that we've got a whole bunch of resources, and I'm always happy to point you to wherever the wind might take you. And so, I would say, the other thing on here is sort of, you know, not ending with tonight. If I were to recommend other discussions that you might be interested in, based on conversations that, you know, I tend to have with communities, I would say, good groups to connect with would be water providers, fire, police, assessors, oh my goodness, really interesting there. Any other service providers or groups that work on aging. And then there's a whole bunch of independent learning. If you have an interest, APA, American Planning Association Colorado is great, CML and CCI, of course. And if you're into water, the Colorado Water Conservation Board has some experts and resources as well that I can connect you with. So, oops. With that, I would just say, thanks for the time and discussion tonight. It was very robust. You got, got my time clock all off because of the good comments, and I just love it. I mean, it's so much, it's so much more fun, and I appreciate what I was able to incorporate into my slide notes, because now others are going to get to learn from you as well. So, just thanks again, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Casey.
And I'll be in touch with some follow-up, and also let me know if there are other pieces, any links to things or whatever you might be interested in, and we can, Jen, we can email back and forth on that.
Perfect. We'll talk soon.
Great.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
Thanks, have a great.
Good evening.
Thank you all for coming. I'll ask you a question. So, early on in, in her presentation, she was talking about a water on House Bill 20-15, and the state even said, ideally, you want to follow or incorporate state's water plan. That didn't sound like a have-to, when in that section, she was saying, these are, if you incorporate water, you have to do these three things, there were three items, but the last one said, ideally.
And I think it was talking to the President, so if we're to revise our conference, we have to add to that, that's something that we could do.
But we don't have to, but we don't have to.
It's not a requirement or a mandate, you must.
Our next meeting was January.
No, we're going to have to pick another chair.
It's time for somebody to.
Somebody else to.
Somebody else to.
If nominated, we will.
We're coordinating another training with the Division of Water Resources.
That's it, and I don't want, I don't want to, you know, and I just, you know, if there was a time, it's time for, to learn and to do it. You know?
That all should be done.
I know.
Great, great, okay.
So, you guys think about who you pick.
I find this a lot easier to see than that up there.
Yeah, that's what I figured you were doing.
One comment I'd like to make is, two or three times, we've had recommendations. Bring in for cataract surgery. Come to us and say, before you talk to the Board of County Commissioners.
Everybody I've talked to that did it was delighted.
And you guys are waiting on them.
This thing makes popping sounds, and it appears a little crispy around the edges.
But then it's, then it's something else. It's like sanding on somebody else.
So, one of the things I talked to our leaders here.